I'd like to call the order, call to order the Select Board meeting for April 22nd, noting that it's 7:00 PM. And I would remind everybody in the room that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So the first order of business this evening is board reorganization, election of new officers as chairperson and clerk. Are there any nominations for chair?
I move to nominate Mike Lawson.
Sir, second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. You ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Thank you. And now entertain the motions to elect clerk.
I move to elect Linda Esteban.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. The nomination is proposed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Thank you. First order of business next is the consent agenda on which our town accountants warrants minutes from the March 18th, is that the 25th? On the 25th. Gift acceptance, anonymous gift of $27,721 for the fire department gift account. Our deep thanks to the anonymous donor. We have three proclamations that we have signed for race amity day, Holocaust remembrance of the 50th anniversary of municipal court. A number of Band-Aid special licenses. Stephen Principi, 52, on May 2nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at 40 Westburg Road. Malt and liquor, malt and wine, excuse me. Salt Box Kitchen on May 3rd, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at 40 Westburg Road. Wine and malt. Nicholas Furbert, April 25th, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM at 2:46. Old Road and Nine Acre Corner, all alcohol. The Umbrella on April 26th, 27th. May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM at 57. Old Road and Nine Acre Corner, wine and malt. The Umbrella on 4/28. And May 5th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at 57. Old Road and Nine Acre Corner, wine and malt. Concord Country Club on 53, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM at 2:46. Old Road and Nine Acre Corner, all alcohol. And we have Sunday entertainment licenses for The Umbrella on April 28th, May 5th, May 12th, May 19th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at 57. Old Road and Nine Acre Corner. Motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar. It's Ren.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you. Smart black camera. All my supporters.
Today is Earth Day, but Earth Week will be celebrated all week long, culminating in a festival on Saturday. Mesquite with Earth Day Festival calls for parade at 10:30. And then ceremony at the Old Man's at 11:30, and an arts festival at noon, also at the Old Man's, joining in the celebration of Earth Week. The annual, semi-annual drop-off, swap-off day is Saturday, May 4th, so it's a week from this coming Saturday. Cambridge Turnpike was closed today, as announced, and the local traffic can get through, so the garden shop and neighbors but otherwise access was prohibited. Police Department said it went fairly smoothly today. The bridge over the Millbrook will be removed in about a week, so it literally will be not passable. The West Concord Cultural District is having an open house at the Bradford Mill, on Bradford Street in West Concord tomorrow night, April 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00. The Mass Cultural Council has funded a grant that will provide a consultant to work with the Cultural District Committee to examine ways in which the town can support, or the community can support the local arts and have a vibrant art scene. The Sustainability Director, Kate Hanley, submitted our Municipal Vulnerability, or MVP, grant last Friday by the deadline. The three projects she proposed were a climate action plan, something with a climate action plan, White Pond drainage improvements for the access road, and reforestation or tree replanting program. She doesn't expect to get all, hopes to get all three, but hopes to get at least one or two. And we are working with Western and Hampton engineers on the drainage down the access road into White Pond to try to remove as much of that rainwater as we can to prevent any contaminants into the pond. And let me see, lastly, the HDC met last Thursday with the Library Corporation to review their plans. I think that was the second meeting. And then hearing was continued till May, Thursday, May 2nd. And one lastly, we have the Cut Through Traffic Workshop, Public Works sponsoring in this building, the townhouse in the hearing room. May, when, Wednesday, May 1st? May 1st, at 6:30 PM. Public is invited. There's also a way to go, if you can't attend that meeting, it's a way to go online and register any concerns you might have about cut through traffic in your neighborhood. They're referring to local roads, not arterial, major arterial streets.
Wow.
Not local road.
Thank you. Are there any questions, for the town manager? All right? Do you have a? So I have a few remarks to make. First, it's a thank you to the moderator, and particularly to all the town staff that allowed us to have a very successful, although somewhat won, town meeting. So we're really grateful. I know that your staff put in a lot of extra hours, and that's great. We appreciate it. I was glib, and I'm delighted to be chair again. I had the good fortune to be chair once before, and so maybe I can get it right this time, I'm not sure. And I'm delighted Linda is going to be the chair. The other thing I thought I would do, the clerk, yes, I'll be all right soon. The other thing I thought I would do is bring everybody up to speed on the town manager search process, since we're coming fairly quickly to hopeful, very positive conclusion. The town manager search committee will meet on this Thursday to interview the six, I guess we'd call them semifinalists, that were the result of a, earlier town manager search committee on April 4th, where we had 15 candidates still cut, and we brought it down to six. And that will be beginning at 7:30 on the 25th. And then on the 27th, the Select Board will be meeting in the hearing room. And Andrew, this may be new news to you, but the meeting is currently scheduled to be at 9:00, but we're going to change it to 8:30. So we have a half an hour before we start with the candidates to sort of do some administrative things. We have to decide on the exact questions we're going to ask, and just to ensure our process, we understand exactly what we're doing. So that will take place at 8:30, and then we will interview. We don't know exactly yet how many finalists we have. We're expecting three, but we don't really know. But beginning at 9:00, then we will interview the three finalists. And the interviews for each of them is scheduled to be an hour and a half. And then after we have interviewed the three candidates, the Select Board will deliberate. If we are not able to come to a decision then, or if we just think we need more time to continue the process, we have scheduled a second such Select Board meeting at 7:00 PM on May 30th, which is a Tuesday, the following Tuesday, to conclude our work. And after that is done, then what will happen is that the Select Board meeting on the 27th, they will, the Select Board will designate one or two of us to enter into negotiations with the candidate, once we have selected that person. So it's coming along. We have, I can tell you, we have six pretty terrific semifinalists, so we're all looking forward to the meeting on the 25th, and then the Select Board meeting on 27th.
Mike, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I just was wondering about the background checks. Are they going to?
The background checks will, after we have made a selection, we will, the Select Board will authorize me to develop a letter to make a tentative offer of employment to the person that we pick. Once that is executed, then the consulting firm MRI will engage in a thorough, complete background check in the candidates, and that's a sort of standard normal process. So it doesn't take place until after we've picked whomever.
Okay.
All right. So the next order of business, we have a public hearing. Municipal Light Plant, Verizon New England, to relocate a utility pole, number two, on West Street, 9 West Street. So I need a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Town Manager, Select Board members, Mr. Marr, good evening. I'm Jeff Crowe, the electoral director for the Town and Concord Light Department. I'm just here to present and answer any questions. We're proposing to relocate pole two, West Street, approximately 21 feet south of this existing location. This request came that the homeowners at 9 West Street have put an addition on, and along with a new driveway and garage. This new driveway is in direct conflict with pole two. We had a sit-down with Verizon. We looked at this in detail. We found that moving the pole was in the best interest of the town to the southern location of the driveway.
Okay, all the applications in order. Are there any questions you want to ask?
Just for my own information, when the homeowner makes this request, is it at their expense?
It is, yes. They'll be paying all the costs.
Thank you.
And in the order to relocate that I have, it says, it appears from the town provided that the building was partially closed, pole closure of the road and sidewalk, is that still?
Yes, we expect to anticipate just partial closure. We'll just be tying up one lane to set the pole, but we'll keep one lane open, along with a piece off soon.
And the work can't begin until the traffic mitigation plan can be?
That's right.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing no one coming to the microphone, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Sir, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed. I deserve any further discussion with the board? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to grant permission to the Town of Concord, acting through the Municipal Light Plant, along with Verizon New England, to relocate utility pole number two, approximately 21 feet south from its existing location, and to appoint approximately three feet from the edge of pavement to be owned by Concord Municipal Light Plant and Verizon New England, along and across the following public ways in Concord, as requested in the petition plan, mark number 190308, dated March 8th, 2019, and subject to the conditions listed on draft order dated April 22nd, 2019.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next order of business is to set a date for the special municipal election for the school debt exclusion vote, also known as the medical school feasibility study. I suppose people call this the poll.
Yes, thank you. So under Article 14, town meeting voted by an overwhelming margin of two-thirds vote to approve a feasibility study contingent on a debt exclusion vote. So I presented two potential dates for you. And one is June 4th, and the other is a week later, June 11th. We did ask the different locations that host elections, which is preferable for them, and town manager also contacted the schools, I believe. And it appears that June 4th is preferred by most.
All right, thank you very much. And we do have the exact language of the debt exclusion ballot question, which would be used by town council, town council, town clerk, and, or whatever.
Finance director.
Any questions for the town board?
Carrie, just to remind all of us, how many days in advance this has to be posted?
The warrant, actually, the warrant needs to be posted at least seven days prior to the election.
Okay.
And the voter registration deadline is 20 days prior.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest two votes? One, to call the election for the fourth, and that's a simple majority vote, and the second, the debt exclusion, which does require two-thirds.
And it's a two-thirds vote, and we have the language in front of us. For the motion that, for the motion to approve the debt exclusion vote, whomever is going to make that motion, please reference the language contained in the memorandum from the town's finance director to the town manager on April 17th, and then we'll have the. So first, a motion to set the date for the town election of June 4th. I also, when we get to the second one, I also wrote to superintendent and the chair of the Concord Public Schools about the language of the ballot question, and they wrote back and said they had no concern about that. So first, I entertain a motion to set the date.
I move to set the date of the town election of June 4th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, I entertain a motion to approve the language of the ballot question.
I make a motion to approve the language of the ballot question, as indicated in a memo sent from Carrie Lefleur to Chris Whalen on April 17th, 2019.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed. I would just note in that motion, for those of you that don't have it, you'll recall that there was an amendment on the floor of town meeting about sustainability, and there was language added to the ballot question specifically that said consistently conquer sustainability goals and principles. So that amendment was incorporated into the language for the law. So thank you. Next, well, let's see.
Here I am.
Next item is the 2020 U.S. Census update from the town clerk.
Yes, I recently attended, in fact, April 1st, 2019, attended the Census 2020 kickoff meeting that Secretary Bill Galvin hosted in Framingham. And he talked about the importance of obtaining a complete count in Massachusetts by working with residents and representatives and community organizations to help people understand the importance and confidentiality of the federal census. I'll be attending a complete count committee workshop in May to see if a complete count committee is something that would be useful for Concord, and I can report back on that. Among ideas expressed at the kickoff were having a phone bank at the senior center for people to be able to respond to the census by phone, if that's more comfortable for them. There will be three ways of responding. There will be an online option, as well as mail and telephone. So the idea is to get people to spend the 10 minutes to respond to the census rather than waiting and finally having people knocking on doors. It's important also to do outreach so that people understand when someone may be disguising themselves as a census worker and calling and asking for things like social security numbers, which they would never do. So we will be working on getting the information that was sent out to you, out to the public, so that people know that it's really important to respond to the census, how to respond to the census, for instance, children, if they're living in two different locations, where they are on April 1st. And the fact that the information in the federal census is not released to the public for 72 years. That's Title 13, and there is, there is no way around that.
I will see, expected, life expectancy.
Yes, right.
For everybody who was involved in that.
Yeah. And I will say that the town's GIS department and planning department and town clerk's office have been working with Secretary of State's office to get the address listing as accurate as possible. There, there is no ability, again, with the confidentiality, of reporting any information, whether there are apartments, or, you know, how many people are living in a household. None of that information is shared. But that is all statistical information that's really important in establishing, you know, what, how often are roads used, you know, what, what are the habits of people, and how that might impact government funding, representative districts that are redrawn, precincts that are redrawn. All of those things are affected by the federal census numbers.
Right.
I would just comment, in addition to reaching out to COA, it might be helpful to reach out to the housing authority?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Because there are specific issues.
Yes, and that may be part of, if there is a decision to have a complete count committee, to have representatives from those groups, as well as residents.
Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is debriefing town meeting. I know the moderator has lined up, swap off.
Good evening. Carmen Reese, town moderator. So town meeting went three nights this year, as you know. On the first night, we had 927 people. We didn't quite need to move into our overflow space, but we were ready if we needed to. On Tuesday, we had 602 people. And on Wednesday, we had 315 people, kind of at the peak. And it does, it does vary through the evening what the attendance is, and it tends to steadily build with the peak coming around 9:00. So by my calculations, because we took a little time to get underway with other things going on on Monday and Tuesday evening, we spent roughly three hours on each of Monday and Tuesday, doing the business of town meeting, and about five and a quarter hours on Wednesday evening, for a grand total of just under 12 hours, which incidentally, Eric Van Loon, over the, over the years of his tenure as town moderator, noticed that every year, town meetings seemed to take about 12 hours. Whatever we did, it takes about 12 hours. So there it is again. We, the consent calendar was a good vehicle again this year, I think, for efficiently addressing routine items that gave us more time to dedicate to the more controversial and meaty things for the town to discuss. We had our electronic voting test drive on Tuesday night. We're still in the process of tabulating surveys, and I haven't, so far, we have 76 surveys, some submitted online, many submitted, most submitted in writing, and they're continuing to dribble in by mail into, into the townhouse. So we'll give it a few more days to see if we get a few more online and in person, and then we'll collate all those results. I haven't yet had an opportunity to debrief with town staff yet on how the experience went for them, or how the town meeting experience overall went. I think that we, we had, again, our closed captioning service, which is well received. We did better this year with the location of the screens, but still not quite well enough, because there were some folks who felt they couldn't quite see those screens over the heads of other folks. I did use pro and con microphones this year, and I solicited a bunch of, solicited feedback on that through the surveys, and we'll see what people think about that, whether and when or never we should use pro and con microphones. On a lot of these things, there really isn't consensus. It's just spread across the board. And sometimes you can see where the weight of sentiment is, and sometimes it's really pretty evenly divided. So we'll see what those survey results look like. Certainly, the verbal feedback and comment feedback that I've gotten about the electronic clickers, that they were really easy to use, no one had a problem, and people were particularly gratified by seeing the graphic results of the vote on the screen. But still a lot of mixed feelings about, you could hear anybody say we should never use electronic voting under any circumstances, but how we should use them is going to be a matter of discussion and evolution. And ultimately, whether the cost is worth whatever benefit we get, depending on how the meeting is comfortable using electronic clickers, that'll be another decision to be made. And happily, we only have to do that year by year for renting, so we don't commit ourselves to anything beyond an individual meeting if we ask for the clickers to be here for us. So I think that's about it for my report. Once we have the survey results in, I'll share those with the board, and we'll try and post the general results. Tried to do it two ways, to get some qualitative feedback in kind of on a scale of one to five, how you feel about this, so that you can see, you know, if neutral is three, where do people fall on either side of that. And then there's narrative, which is not limited to whatever questions went on the survey this year, and certainly people write about things that are of concern to them, even if they weren't on the survey. Those I won't put on the website, because I think they're of a more individual nature. People wouldn't necessarily be expecting to see their written comments on the, on the website. But certainly, the, the feedback on where people are in this range of, are you in favor or against certain aspects of town meeting, pro and con microphones? Should we start at 7:00? Should we start at 6:45? Should we always end at 10:00, regardless of whether we could save a night of town meeting? Those kinds of questions, along with the electronic voting. So there any questions or observations to the board?
I just have a question. So it's, people still have time to respond to that survey?
Sure do, yes.
Online and?
Yes, it's available online. And in terms of getting a paper copy, I don't know if there's anywhere, you know, I suppose you could get a paper copy if you came to the townhouse and asked for one in the Select Board's office, because Heather could print one out. But, but there isn't a pile of them sitting anywhere at this point.
Last off, there was two parts to the clicker issue. One was the technology part, and then there was more of the policy, should we, when should all of that? I know that would be difficult to resolve, but the technology seemed to have gone flawlessly.
Technology went well. It was easy, it was simple. We did have someone there from Turning Technologies, operating the laptop. And as I say, I haven't had an opportunity to debrief with town staff yet, but my sense is that operating that separate laptop, it's based on, the program is based on PowerPoint. It's an ordinary laptop. The radio frequency network plugs into a USB port in the laptop. And most towns that use Turning Technologies, Technology don't have someone from Turning Technologies there, which is one of the things that makes it a little more cost-effective than the OTI system that Whalen and some other towns are using, because it really requires someone from the company there to operate the equipment. This one is much simpler, and should be within our wheelhouse, and I'll confirm that with, with town staff. So it's, as near as I can tell, it's, it's the best, this technology is kind of the best balance between cost-effectiveness and manageability for the staff. The, the technology that Acton is using is more cost-effective, but a much bigger pain in the neck for the staff. And it appears to have more limitations than this system had. I watched it fail in Acton, and it was with around 900 people, which we had, and it worked fine. Actually, I guess on Tuesday, we had 600 people, but.
All right, thank you very much. At the beginning of the meeting, you were thanked, and so thanked you in person.
Thank you.
For your good humor and efficiency, and weaving our way through those three days, especially that last one, which, as you indicated, was a semi-marathon.
Yes, it was. Yes, that one was the long haul.
It was.
Okay, but the wagons all came in. Okay, but the wagons all came in.
All right, thank you very much, Carmen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a second part to the debrief for us, though, and that is going over and making sure we understand what we now have to do with activities that were undertaken. One of them, we already did, with respect to the deep woods study, but the other ones that are still out there for us to contend with are the actions required with respect to the Affordable Housing Articles 23 to 26. So, for Article 23, there's nothing we have to do. That was an allocation of free cash, and it will be in the town manager's discretion. Article 24, you'll recall, was setting up a trust to manage funds, and so, what we have to do as a board is we have to, in fact, decide how the trust is going to be set up, the powers it's going to have, what the composition of it is going to be, how and when they can disperse funds, and that, so forth. And that will, when we've completed that work, that will become a bylaw that we'll go back then to town meeting for its approval next year. So, I don't think we're in a position to do that tonight, but on a subsequent, and soon, agenda for our board, we are going to have to deal with that. My suggestion to the board now is there are a number of towns that already have these trust committees set up, and I'll send you some general information about that, that I received from a citizen, but it would be worth a while, I think, to go see, because the way they've structured them, the powers they've given them, how they behave are quite different, and so we will, we will need to do that. So, we'll get that on an agenda for our next board meeting. Article 25 and 26, as passed, can be sent to the legislature then for their action. Chris, the process is you will help us put something together.
To be delivered to the legislature.
And we deliver it to the revenue subcommittee or to our representatives?
We usually go through our representatives, the senator and the rep.
Okay, so, for both of those, you might recall that Article 26 will, and it will be the next thing I mention to you, requires a bylaw of the specific building surcharges. But, the article itself was passed at town meeting, can be sent on to the legislature without the management by law, that's a local matter. So, we can get 25 and 26, that's passed by town meeting, off to the legislature, and working with Chris, I'll make sure that happens, and I will meet with Mike and Tammy to make sure we get their support for that, so, then they'll be able to join me on that, hopefully. The second part of Article 26, though, is we need to develop a real bylaw that says, well, you built this, your surcharge is whatever. And so, I'd like to discuss that, as you, I have a perspective on it, which is there are really two parts to it. The first part is, I believe, a set of policy decisions that have to be made about the bylaw. For example, our nonprofits exempt. Is new construction going to be assessed the same way remodeling construction is going to be assessed? Is there going to be a blanket exception, so that nothing, you know, less than, I'm making up another $5,000, if you're honest, don't worry about that, there's only stuff about that. So, I think there is a policy issue, in addition to the notion of what is our expectation for what we intend to try to raise through this particular method. You recall, the Affordable Housing Funding Committee had lots of background on that, and had recommendations, proposals, if you will, and I think it's still our job to review the evidence and say, well, I think from this particular article, we should try to raise between X and Y number of dollars. So, I think those are things, or policy matters, that either we take on, or we could construct and seat a very short-term committee that would have membership, that would, you know, finance from affordable housing, from planning, all the relevant people, and help us rassle if those are incoming after the board. We can either do it ourselves, or think about seating a short-term committee. But once that is done, once the parameters around the surcharge are defined, then I think, my thinking anyway, would be to hand this to the planning department and say, here are the policy and prescriptive parts of this, please come back to us with a schedule that raises within this boundary and is consistent with these policies. Because I don't know how to do a surcharge, and I don't, you know, I don't think that's particularly our expertise or our southern data. So, sorry for the long winded, but I'm happy to talk about that now, particularly the second part, is the part about separating the policy from the actual construction of a surcharge. What do you think about that?
So, I think there, a great deal of time was spent on the, that aspect would be Affordable Housing Funding Committee, and I think there's some, certainly some expertise there that we would want to draw on. It needs to be in a larger context, but I think we need to tap that, for sure.
Well, I would certainly think we put together this little short-term committee, certainly with somebody coming up. I mean, because I, John Paul, just be each other.
And we did hear from the floor that night, a concern from, particularly for seniors, to consider some kind of blanket exemption to add to the policy, and I think you mentioned that.
There's probably a lot of other policy components to this that I really haven't thought about, but I don't, I think that's really our job, whether we do it directly or get a committee to come back to us, or hold on, I think it's our position to do that. I don't think it's urgent, because I think it'll take the legislature a while, and it's going to take a long time to try to come up with a bylaw that we could take back to town meeting, but also to Article 24 and Article 26, an extra town meeting, and then we would just be waiting on the legislature.
25 and 26.
No, no, 24 and 26.
24, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, the trust, and then 25 is, it's very, you said exactly what the charge is and that, so that's right, but. So, what are your thoughts about doing it ourselves, or a short-term committee, or some other?
I think the way that you've laid it out is very helpful, splitting up the policy goals and the financial goals. I think you're right, but I hadn't really thought it through. I think it's really helpful how you've laid it out. I do agree the Affordable Housing Committee has a lot of expertise, having spent, I don't know how much time, 18 months or whatever it was, maybe even more than one person should from that committee might be involved, or is it possible to continue that, say, three more months, to have that committee give us the recommendation?
Well, I'm, one or two, I don't have a point of view about that, but I do have a point of view about asking the committee, it's one thing to ask somebody to come up with funding organizations, it's a different to come up with policy recommendations, and their expertise and their charge was around funding, and that's what they did, and they did a good job, and they spent a lot of time on it, but I think this is more of a policy issue, and I would like, in addition to, again, wanting to, other voices on the table, because this is a broad town, but I can't say, we want people from the Affordable Housing Committee, we probably want somebody from the finance group, somebody from the planning department that's going to be looking at the actual detail, and exactly, but.
So, it sounds like you're maybe suggesting a small committee that works for a few months on this.
Yeah, I would think putting together four or five people, and a very straightforward charge, which comes out in our convention for policy decisions about how this is going to be structured, and it sounds easy, but we don't know how hard this is to actually write committee charges, or what it can do to. And I think it's a committee that would be easy to seat, in this sense, and a lot of folks are very interested in this.
Right. I think that sounds like a good idea, to do a small group for a limited charge to help shape a policy.
And, you know, I might add to the list of potential people to think about, maybe someone from the tax service.
Well, let's just listen, why don't I, I'll work with the town manager to get a draft of the charge, and you folks start thinking about people, and what the membership would look like, and I'll just focus on the charge. You want this to be on the five, six attendants? Might as well, see if we can get started on this. Might take us a while to get a committee seated and all, you know, it takes months to get a committee seated, but we might as well get cracking on it.
Right. When you say people, you don't mean specific names, you mean like one person from planning, one person from finance, like that, right?
My personal thinking was not people, but representatives.
Exactly, correct.
Skill sets or representation kind of stuff.
Correct.
But after we say, well, we need an ex, people might have, you know, individual people that they think would be good at that.
Right, that's, right.
All right? So, I'll work with Chris to get a charge, you guys all work to think about what the membership should look like, and that's stuff that I'll make sixth meeting. Going back to Article 24, Carrie is, one of the things that we have to do is we have to actually create the trust documents in addition to the components of the bylaw. Is that something we can turn to you for help with? And I ask that, not trying to put you on the spot, I just want to know.
I'm Carrie LaFleur, the Finance Director. I know Town Council has some good models, and I think if you wanted me to put something together, I would be looking to Town Council.
Okay, well, I'm happy to help, but Mina, does?
Mina had sent a few along to me several months ago, so I could pull those out and forward them along to you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the next, which is your review of the Middle School Building Committee charge, and before we get into our discussion, I know we have at least one person who would like to make some remarks, and I'm trying to get the attention of Ms. Bout, being unsuccessful.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at the chat.
Do you want to make remarks, or not?
Regarding the charge?
Yeah.
No, I think we've, we've already sent you some feedback.
I wasn't sure, so, so we have one person who wants to make some remarks. Parker, please.
Charlie Porcher, 105 Chestnut Street. Charlie Porcher, 105 Chestnut Street. Following the passage of the amendment, the people that were responsible, myself included, for drafting the amendment and creating some of the thinking behind it, decided to draft a set of principles that kind of led us to produce that amendment in the first place. And we felt that it would be important to document a little bit more of the thinking, the definitions, some of the roadmap-type problems that a committee might need to address. So, we did this with the intent of providing some input to the construction of the building committee charge, and to the actual drafting at some point by the building committee of the RFP. So, this document basically gets into what are the fundamental principles that we're talking about here. One is fossil-free, the other is net zero, best-in-class energy efficiency, efficiency through passive solar design, the building, the high-efficiency building envelope, heating as heat pumps and so forth, and we've got a small paragraph on each of these topics. So, you know, it's offered as input, basically. And the reason why we did this is because when you're trying to do something new, it's important to be very specific about what it is you're talking about. Net zero, and, you know, sustainability, these topics, these subjects are almost like a Rorschach test, you know, they could mean anything to anybody. So, what we tried to do was be very specific about, well, what did we have in mind when we produced this amendment, and what did we think the amendment was in the spirit of, so to speak? So, they're right here, these are the, this is the document. We're going to continue to work with the sustainability community on better defining this, but we think we're pretty far along at this point, and we think this would be useful to you and to the, anybody that's working on the charge, and to the, eventually to the committee itself, when working through the issues associated with the RFP. RFP, I'm talking about the RFP for the architects.
As opposed to the building committee charge?
Well, it's really for both, but primarily, this is for the committee charge, but further down the road, hopefully, the building committee will be able to use these, you know, as an assist in sorting out what they want to do with the RFP itself.
Is this something you would want in the charge, or something?
Yes, I think so, I think so, but we're not, we're not writing the charge, we haven't exactly seen the charge, so we're not sure exactly how compatible this is, but I think this would be, would be good to have in the charge. It's fairly specific, and it basically speaks again to what we're talking about with that amendment. So, I think it can be, you know, a document that backs up what that really was all about.
And we have copies of all of this?
Well, you're, I sent you a PDF, and there's a hard copy.
We can have copies of that, distribute that, so.
Would you prefer I send it to anyone else, or?
No, well, good.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. Let me ask Ms. Bout, plus I have for you, is you have written to us and spoken with us about the school's concerns about, not concerns, but whatever points you wanted to make about the building committee charge.
Yes.
Reading the current draft, are you satisfied, or are there still things that you believe we have not incorporated, that we should pay additional attention to?
I think for the most. Should I come up there? Hi, Heather Bout, School Committee and Chair of the Facilities Planning Committee. So, I think for the most part, you have covered everything that we have sent, so thank you very much for doing that. The couple small things that I would point out, one, I just realized that it, I'm not sure if this actually covers it or not, one of the things that we recommended was that the building committee be in charge of recommending whether we move forward with the process of either build, bid, sorry, bid-build-design, or contractor-at-risk, and that's, so that, construction, sorry, yes, construction manager, CM-at-risk. That's something I think we just want to make sure we specify, that the building committee is recommending one or the other in terms of a process here. Another catch that was, just, this is why I was distracted, when you looked at me, the, under the communication with town and school staff, the third bullet point says the committee will expect that the school department will maintain an organized central file of basically all of the documents throughout this. And I'm just questioning, is that something normally that the school department would do? It seems like it would be the building committee that would maintain all of the documents regarding the building committee's process.
We're talking about physical location, as opposed to process of doing it?
I just want to make sure we're not creating an extra step where all of a sudden, the school department is supposed to maintain the records of the building committee when the building committee is managing the process, right? So. So, under, let's see, it's page five at the top, it's the third bullet under town and school staff, the committee will, and it says, so the top of page five, expect that the school department will maintain an organized central file of original and substantive documents throughout the project, sufficient to satisfy SBA auditing, if appropriate, as well as town audit requirements.
That's a good question, let me think about that. It made sense in the case of the elementary school projects, because once they got built, it was a long process of auditing, often it went through the finance director.
Okay.
But the records were kept, I think, with the school department, so let me speak with.
If that's also in the past, and it worked, that's, I just wanted to put it out there as a question, and make sure that that's the most efficient way to do it, I'm certainly not. I'm certainly not advocating that we can't.
I'm sure that where they're physically would be held to maintain, as opposed to them having an organizing role.
Okay. And that's fine. I'm sure we don't mind housing them and maintaining them.
Right. I think we rely on the architect and the architect staff to keep the records, and then turn them over in mass, which I think is typically how it happens.
Okay, great. That makes sense.
Right, so what I think we should do, we've got one question, Chris is going to look at, Mr. Parker's given us some additional things to look at, so let's get this on the agenda for our next meeting in the hope that it gets done at the next meeting, because I know the schools are sensitive to getting on with this.
We are, yes.
An RFP, please.
Sorry, in fact, speaking of which, you just reminded me of one other thing that I might mention. It might be a little ahead of this, because I think it's something the building committee requests within the RFP process, but we would love for the building committee to really lay out their ideal time schedule. So for the building committee to be able to say, our goal is, you know, to be able to bring back a plan to next year's town meeting, and can we aim for that goal? That's an aggressive goal, and we, the schools, realize that. And it may or may not be doable depending on how these studies go, but we would love to at least put it out there as the ideal goal, because if you don't have it as your goal, you're never going to hit it.
So would be including that as a particular requirement or charge to the committee when we develop a timeline?
Right, to develop a timeline with the ideal goal of coming back to town meeting 2020, knowing that depending on how these things go, that, you know, we're certainly not tying our hands to that.
We put in for them to develop the timeline, but we can't tell them that...
Which is...
Good point. We will make sure our representative from the committee on the building committee.
All right, so the other thing I know that has to be done subsequent to this is they will be responsible for developing an RFP, but we've done this before, and there must be templates.
I know that we have several templates from the school department, so I'm sure that we could provide one if that would be helpful.
Well, I'm sure not, I don't think we need it.
Right, the building committee will need one.
Just to put it on speed.
Yeah, and that would likely come, most of their verbiage would likely come straight from the MSBA website, because they provide a lot of that, whether you're working with them or not. But we'd be happy to help the building committee with that plan.
Great, thanks very much. So we'll review Mr. Parker's...
Thank you.
...work to get a draft for our meeting on May 6th. I think what I would suggest is after you've reviewed the handout, Mr. Parker, if you've got comments about it or thoughts about it, send them to Andrew.
Carrie, just ask a question. I wonder if it would be agreeable to make reference to that document, have it as an attachment, but not necessarily build it into the committee charge per se, to simply where the committee shall conform to, or whatever the right words are, is be sent a bullet in the committee charge and then have it as a direct attachment, so anybody reading the charge would see the document that you wrote.
It would still be a formal part of the charge, just not in the body.
I don't see why there'd be an objection to that. I think...
I'll make it a lot simpler.
I think we will come back and talk to the building committee as well, so it's not like we're done tonight.
Let's proceed with that, then. And I guess then the question that you can respond to, to Andrew, is are there any objections to including this handout as an attachment or appendix?
No, but I can anticipate that you may need to look at some of the language in the charge itself.
Make it consistent.
I would make one last comment. You probably do want to review that document before you make your final decision.
You should review the document before you make that final decision to just attach it, because you may want to include words like net zero and, you know, fossil-free. You may want to, you may want to go a little bit deeper. I don't see the need to incorporate all of the text, though.
I think that's essentially your comment. All right, so we'll do that, and then we'll deal with the issue that involves a bill account, hopefully we can get this charge approved in our next meeting, so we begin to get the decision. So, everybody out there listening, get your green cards out, and this is going to be an important town committee, and we don't want to have a lot of time go by to worry about getting it seated, because we want to get it seated so the committee can get to work. So if you're interested, please go online or come by the town house and complete a green card and host. Now, I was anxious to order you on a new committee for the town. We'll all be grateful to you for that. Any other comments about this item, Ms. Bout?
Just one question related to that. I've had, I'm sorry.
You got it, come on.
Although that I had someone ask me, they had looked into submitting a green card online, but because it's, the committees are all listed and the building committee is not listed yet, they weren't sure how to actually submit.
Who can solve that?
We will solve that, we'll figure it out tomorrow. If anybody out there can't do it, please write to me, and I'll make sure you get a green card filed.
Wonderful.
We're going to fill it out this spring.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, next item is the long-range plan update. So as you may recall, the select board, I don't remember the exact date, but the select board met on a Saturday to review the long-range plan with the idea of trying to come to some understanding of what were those actions the select board wanted to support. And so what I, what I have done is all of the select board members were asked to submit comments about various sections. I took all of the submitted sections and created this handout that I sent along to you. And so my request to you here is that you review this document and you send, again to Andrew, so we don't get in a pickle with the old new law, send to Andrew for all of the proposed actions in here, try to categorize them as high, medium, or low priorities. And ask Andrew then, if he could, for some reason, show us the way they play out with his goal at a subsequent meeting, for us to see if we can arrive at consensus about what we believe are the high, especially the high priorities for the long-range plan. So question, you have comments or...
So at that Saturday, as some, those who were there will recall, at that Saturday session, I raised the issue that many of the town departments had already built into the budget that was approved for this year, and the town manager's five-year capital plan, some of their priorities. And so in, as we discussed that, we asked Chris if he could reach out to his department heads and have them give us some indication of what they were, already had in the pipeline and what they were working on as their priorities, so that we could be informed by that. Two of the town staff did speak to us. Unfortunately, it happened to be at a meeting that was, by the time they got on the agenda, was either quite late and there was no opportunity for us to either ask them questions, or in one case, I guess Kate Hodges' report, there was no written material to back up her verbal. So we still need some material there that I think will inform us as we do the tasks that you're asking us to do. And Chris, you would have to help us with that.
I have ten direct reports, and you heard from two of them, so there's eight that owe a response. I hadn't shook the week after we had the Saturday meeting. I did request that from the departments, but they may have lost track.
I mean, we wouldn't have had time to hear all of them at that point.
So I'll reiterate the request, that it would be helpful for the board to set its goals if they knew what town departments were working on, what they thought were priorities.
That would be very helpful to us.
Right, and we need it in written form, obviously.
Yeah, we have one from Marcia, I think that was in written form. Kate's presentation was a...
Part slazin', part verbal, and so we...
All right, I'm getting that report. Any other comments?
I have a question about how to prioritize this. I'm looking at, you're talking about the document summary of section numbers of the select board, I think?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so third sample in section 4.1, there's four sub-goals. That's cultural and historic resources. And then in section 4.2, there are not any listed sub-goals, and each one is different. It's so...
Well, that's because individuals, members of the board did.
Correct, that's fine. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, if I was to go and prioritize, are you looking for just a high level, like you think 4.1 is the most important, and then 4.6? Or are you looking for these sub-goals within it to each be high, low, medium, or, how do you envision this looking?
I could call asking you a question. I don't exactly know. What I intended to do, and I took a shot at this myself before I made that, I just, I just wrote on a piece of paper what I, I went through it, and when somebody said, this is what we should do, or we ought to be worried about this, I just put it in one or two boxes. I didn't worry about sub-points or things like that, and, you know, it's not altogether tidy, but...
Right. So when you say you put it in high, low, or medium, you're talking about like, in section 4.1 at the bottom, there's one, two, three, four, each one of those things?
Well, some of them, no, I didn't, but some of them I did.
Okay, all right. So the way, so you're saying go through the document and you see something that's real important, like you see something that's low priority, mark it.
The only, you were here at the time, but we had a very detailed report from ad hoc, not ad hoc, but a seated town committee on governance. It was a very comprehensive report, really well done, and they had a lot of, lot of suggestions for us. And what the board did is they went through that, I won't say like I'm suggesting, but similarly, and tried to extract from that what they thought were really important things we had to worry about, and what were things we had to do, but not today. And that's all I'm looking for, is what I want to get is a handle on and be able to say to our fellow citizens here, these are the things we're really going to try to get done. Working with the town saying, and planning is on this.
Right.
Or not, whatever the case may be. So it's not mandatory.
No, I get it, okay, thanks.
Good bet. Okay.
And it may or may not, sorry, it may or may not coincide with the priorities that were set in the very back of the envisioned Concord booklet? Oh, okay. But I think we'll be informed by that, by the town departments.
They did, and spent a lot more time on this, of course, than we did, but they, you'll recall, what they do is submit the report to us, and we have the responsibility of saying from that report what priorities are supposed to be. So it's not that we would want to disagree, but if we had a difference of opinion...
And I think as Elise Woodward said at one of the meetings, you know, before the document was even finished printing, it's already evolving and things are changing, opportunities have come up, so there won't be necessarily a one-to-one correspondence with what...
Right.
All right. Yes, Nick, hold on.
Nick Pappas, 300 Virginia Road, permission to lobby?
Lobby, yeah.
One thing in the long-range plan, the issue of transportation, which I worked on, I know that, I believe that there was a proposal for some funding for that that was not included in the budget this year. So there were decisions made that didn't fund some of the things. Transportation in particular cuts across several areas, so it may not show up well from any particular department, because greenhouse gas generation, transportation, I believe, accounts for 25% of what the town does right after buildings. And on top of that, the quality of life, if you've tried to commute across Concord during rush hour, you know what that's like, and a lot of complaints from citizens, both in the previous long-range plan and this long-range plan about traffic.
And then there's transportation, with respect to getting people around town.
And then the issues that came up with parking at the high school, and the inadequacy of our current systems for transportation for visitors as well.
So in the report that Marcia did present us that night, she does mention the cross-town...
Yeah, because it just cuts across and doesn't necessarily fall...
Many of the, many of the items in the long-range plan. Thank you for your lobbying effort. Next business item is to disband the Affordable Housing Funding Committee. Before we get too emotional, I think I would really like to thank that committee, they did a great job for us, who would have not been able to come to town meeting with the proposals we had, if they hadn't done the work. Very detailed, very comprehensive, the chair, Todd Benjamin in particular, not only assisted on the committee, but then helping at town meeting, answering questions and making presentations, so I'm grateful to them. I think they've done their job. The proposal is to disband them effective, I think on April 30th, if they have a final meeting, I think scheduled for the 29th. And although it would normally come up in miscellaneous correspondence, I think I could say that we received today a note from the committee letting us know what actions and timetables are planned for getting the bylaws that we discussed. And so as Carrie had mentioned and I had mentioned, it's pretty inconceivable that there wouldn't be representation from that committee on this little subcommittee that we're going to put together, so...
And you're going to recruit all the rest of them for other committees, right?
We'll, we'll just make sure they don't escape. If they don't get work, then it's, they'll come back and haunt them for the rest of their time in Concord. So I would entertain a motion to disband the committee with our thanks effective April 30th.
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, public comments. I know we have one person who wants to make a comment, Perry.
Thank you, I'm Ned Perry, 362 Bedford Street. As you know, at the recent town meeting, I expressed some concerns about the Library Corporation's addition plan, and it wasn't the first time I've raised those concerns, and it probably won't be the last time I raise concerns. Since the town meeting, I have met with several town staff members about the coordination and cooperation between the Library Corporation and the Town of Concord Municipal Offices. One of these meetings was with Director Cronin, who was particularly helpful with her responses to some of my requests. During my presentation, I referenced the agreement that was last signed in 2009 between the Corporation and the Town of Concord. And through some of these meetings, I understand that that agreement may be reviewed and possibly updated in conjunction with the archival interests of the town being coordinated, perhaps with the library. I would hope if that is, if the agreement is reviewed, that you will also consider incorporating some language into the agreement relative to the Concord Sustainable Goals. I think that, I know the library did some solar power studies back in 2017 with an independent contractor. They touted it in their newsletter. I went to the town, and the town really, and they said they coordinated with the town engineers, but I couldn't find anybody in the town who had the study. So I went to the library director, and she provided me with a copy. It's a very, looks like a very good study. It made some strong recommendations. It was filed in September 2017, and unfortunately, I think the Corporation, in fact, just filed it. There's nothing in the present additional plans that either talks about geothermal or solar. The solar study was done on the main library on the roofs, where the solar panels wouldn't have been seen, but it was going to provide up to 9% of the energy that the library was going, was using over the year. As we all know, the cost of our energy in Concord is based upon the peak usage of energy in the hottest summer day of the year, when presumably the sun is out and solar panels are being the most effective. So nonprofits, the town individuals who would incorporate solar into their systems, actually are helping the whole population of the town. And I think the Corporation really should be encouraged to be as, as consistent with our sustainable goals as an entity. Other nonprofits have, the town has, and I hope that that might be considered to be included in the agreement between the town and the Corporation. Be glad to answer any questions, but thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Now, if there's any questions, anybody else for Terry?
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments, citizen comments? Single and coming to the microphone. We next move on to committee liaison reports, and before we do that, one of the tricky tasks that we have every year at this time with departing members and new members is to make sure we have a list of liaisons for the various committees. And I took the liberty of, since we had two departing board members, Ms. McCain and Ms. Stottman, I took the liberty of trying a draft of reassigning committee liaisons, and I sent you all a copy of it. So I have no concerns about any particular one. The report I'd ask you to do is please review this for not only your interest, but potential conflicts that might have given some other committees that are both on Wednesday, and I, that's all I know. So if you could review it for conflicts and review it for the kinds of interests that you particularly have, and write back only to me about your concerns, I will try to produce a, well, a final draft for our meeting on, in May 6th. And the only real fixed points here is that traditionally, the chair has assigned the liaison with the school committee and the finance committee, and so I included those in mine and then took a couple of mine off to reshuffle them. So please let me know, and I would say that I don't know whether yours is, or if you have. I've asked, I'm in representative hats, but I can't go to the meeting tonight, and in the future, I won't be able to go because it conflicts with finance committee, so I've asked Linda to see if she could represent us this week on Thursday at the Lincoln Townhouse. So if you can, great, and watch your email. So does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
All right, so then the liaison reports.
Well, first I want to thank the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. I mean, they've just been through a real month of well-executed events, beginning with the honored citizens ceremony, and then Miriam's Corner, and of course, the parade and the dawn salute, so my hat's off to all of them. The Affordable Housing Funding Committee, I attended last week, and I think there's a meeting Wednesday night of this week as well, and they're working on their final report. I think there is an appetite, quite frankly, for them to go on. They've invested so much over 18 months, and we are grateful to them, but they also are prepared to finish their final report. And then I also attended the ZDA meeting, and I just want to mention that the military marketplace was on the agenda for that night, seeking special permit to use the second floor as well as to hold special events there, and that discussion is going to be continued. That concludes my report.
I attended the Ucardo Trust Committee meeting. It was Tuesday, April 9th. They had continuing business of looking at Concord Cares update, trying to provide fuel assistance to folks in town. They were dealing with the annual disbursement from the Silent Fund about camperships. The Silent Fund makes two contributions to families, one on the holidays in December, and then one for camperships for the summer. And then they were into executive session to make funding decisions. I also attended municipal life plan meeting. We had an update from, I think, the assistant director, I'm not sure, Mr. Hall wasn't there? I forgot the title of the, for telecommunications, learning about how we're doing with our telecommunications, and the punchline there was continuing to draw people into the service, and it seems to be doing quite well. There's a long discussion, cost of service and rate design study that's going on, and then a follow-up meeting on time of use. So this is, this will continue to be a very important committee as we go forward, particularly you heard earlier from sustainability and energy things, so it's a very important committee going forward. So that's two that I attended. Next is miscellaneous correspondence. I have, I don't know how miscellaneous it is, but one of the things the board does every year is also update its goals for the year, so I distributed to this, to the board the goals from last year and ask you to please provide your input to these. You will note that the goals are sometimes quite broad and other times very specific, so a lot of the same kind of balance, and if you could get your concerns and select issues here that we should incorporate into our goals and objective to us, that would be great. You could send them to me or Andrew, but remember, just if you're sending them to me, just a copy everywhere.
Wait a minute, I'm not trying to understand. You're saying our suggested goals for the upcoming year?
Yeah, we have to revise this document for 2009 to 2020.
Right, right.
And there's some, if you go online, the previous ones of these goals are online, and you will see there's some carryover in consistency from here, so it's not full colossal work here, but we do need to update it and get it ready for action. Now I received, this corresponds to Mr. Marr actually receiving, reporting to me indicating that Beth Feinberg is a Concord resident who is receiving her Summit Award on April 26th. She is the first Concord resident to receive this award, which is very similar in terms of effort to the Eagle Scout Award for boys, and so I think we want to congratulate her ahead of time, and with your approval, I will make sure we get a nice note out to Ms. Feinberg congratulating her on this achievement. And next, we have committee nominations. We do. We need to nominate Mr. Chang.
Yeah, yeah. I nominate Eugene Chang of 3 Concord Green, number six to the PEG excess advisory committee.
Thank you. Just for, there's no second required for nominations, and just for the new members of the board, the general pattern is that you're nominated at one board meeting, it's then a public nomination, and then we wait until the following board meeting to appoint it in case there might be some issue or concern brought by. So Mr. Chang will actually show up on our next board meeting as a committee appointment. So the next term committee appointments.
Move to appoint Kate James of 45 Esterbrook Road to the Concord Center Cultural District Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021.
So second?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Next, for committee reappointments.
Move to reappoint Scott Hopkinson of 67 Indian Spring Road to the PEG excess advisory committee for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Confirming the town manager's appointment.
Move to confirm the town manager appointments of Michael Capisi of 11 Wood Street to the Historical Commission for associate term to expire May 31, 2020. Tom Beardsley of 21 Liberty Street and Robert Gross of 401 Main Street to the Historical Commission for terms to expire May 31, 2022. Tom Matthews of 135 Elsinore Street to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Next, we are going to adjourn to executive session, and I need to find my, oh, cheap, cheap, well, not wrong, this is very important. I wonder where mine went, but there's a very particular process, so I would entertain a motion to enter executive session, to review draft executive session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
The open meeting law requires a roll call vote in order to go into executive session.
We don't need any.
Yep, great. Before the roll call, let me state, an executive session, the board will review draft executive session minutes and so, in an open meeting, but doing so in open meeting may have a distant no effect on the positions of the town. Will the clerk please call a roll? Aye.
And myself, aye.
Thank you. I would note that at the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session. So we are now in executive session.